Thanks for coming. So, this is an information session about adult use recreational marijuana. And we're glad you're here. And first, I want to just go around and say who you are and if you're on a -- have a role in Conway on a board or something, say that. And say where you live in Conway or whatever town you live in, I guess. Say what town you live in. So, I'm Mary McPintock. I'm the chair of the planning board and I live over near the grammar school on Route 16. And we'll start here. Go around.
I'm Risa and I live not far from Mary. And we'll start with Beth on Husick Road in Conway.
I'm Beth Gershman. I'm on the planning board and you know where I live now.
I'm Ron Kohler. Thank you for having us. From Asheville, select boy. And I live on Bailey Road in Asheville.
Peggy Sloan, Council of Governments.
Asheville resident.
Asheville.
Josephowski, Conway, Greensboro Road, planning board member.
Robert Vega, Board of Select on Towne County.
Pat Lynch, South Shore, Trevor Road, regular citizen.
Andy Jaffe, planning board member, live up the hill next to Sue.
Planning board member, Sue McFarlane, live up the hill.
Great. So, what we're going to do tonight is, basically, the goal of -- we have two goals. Why we're having this meeting. One is that we want to give you some information, especially thanking Peggy for putting together the slideshow, but give you some information about what the possibilities are for marijuana commercial establishments in Conway. And then have a discussion about the information that we see and what, you know, find out what folks' concerns are. And really, we have two goals. One is that providing information, but really, as a planning board, we're looking to get information. Because we are -- we don't know what people think in Conway. You know, if you think about it, people voted in favor of the -- Franklin County as a whole and Conway voted in favor of legalizing marijuana, but we don't know what that vote means. We don't know, is that because so you can grow your own marijuana in your backyard and have use -- personal use? Does that mean you want to be able to go down the street to a store and buy marijuana products? Does it mean you want to grow it? Does it mean that you want to go to cafes and use it in a cafe? You know, does it mean that you're concerned about marijuana being illegal? When marijuana was illegal, then that involved people being arrested for marijuana, put in jail for, you know, marijuana use. And, you know, was that a concern? We don't know what people -- why they voted to legalize it. So, we're trying to get information because as a planning board, part of our job is to create zoning bylaws, you know, regulate how things happen in Conway to take care of each other as, you know, Conway residents. And so, there are state regulations that are being -- state regulations that the Cannabis Control Commission is creating. This is the current draft. You're welcome to read it. But do we need more than the -- than the state's regulations is part of the question. So, let's see, what other more things I want to say. Really, big note that what we're talking about is commercial establishments related to marijuana. We're not talking about personal use here. That's -- the planning board has nothing to do with stuff about personal use. So, we're going to share the slideshow and then we're going to have a discussion. And there is no time pressure on us right this moment because we did vote for a moratorium in Conway till the end of the year, the end of 2018, or six months after the state regs are finalized, if that happens later, if they don't really get it done by March 15th. So, we are not going to bring anything to this town meeting in May related to recreational marijuana, to commercial establishments. We're right now gathering information, seeing if people are, you know, have concerns that, you know, we need to have regulations beyond the state regulations, in which case then we would need, if we needed zoning bylaws, then we would go through a whole preparing zoning bylaws, public hearing process, and we would probably go to a special town meeting in the fall to get those in place. So, that's -- so, we're not, you know, leaving here thinking we have to get everything done before our May town meeting. That's, yeah, have a discussion. And then, we have this, you know, we feel, realize this is a topic that not everybody's really in, maybe, you know, willing to say, "I really want to be able to go down the street and get, you know, stuff at the store." "I really want to be able to go to the cafe." Or, "I really don't want this in my town," or whatever. So, we have a poll. We have a poll that we're going to ask everybody to take one of these sheets, write something on it at least, you know, answer the questions, write something. It's anonymous. Turn it in and then we will tally that up and see if there's, you know, what people's views are. So, that's what we're going to do.
I think most of this group will speak their piece.
Maybe everybody else can speak their piece, but we didn't -- we're doing this just as a way in case there's something else you want to say that you don't want to say out loud. That's the plan for the evening. Sound good? Questions? All right. Juice.
Okay. Just want to thank Peggy again for helping us with these slides. I think she shared them with the whole county, is it? Or anybody that wants them. When we first looked at these slides, we said, "Well, we're going to scare people." But the truth is, these are representative pictures of what's happening in other parts of the country. There's not a lot going on in Massachusetts yet, so we really didn't find, I know we'd struggled looking for some craft pages for craft marijuana, but there aren't a lot of those in operation. So, what you have here is, on the left, is a, that's a dual facility. It's medical on one side and recreational on the other side. And I think the only difference is the price. You go one side, it's medical, the other side it's recreational.
Can't be taxed.
What's that?
Medical can't be taxed.
Taxes, yeah. Taxes, yeah. On the left, on the right, is a indoor growing facility. Most of the growing that we're aware of is done internally in a building. It's done with, you know, high intensity lighting and a lot of it's done hydrophonically. This is an artisan grow facility where they're growing them in pots. There are some outside growing in California, I believe. That's the only one that I'm aware of. And I left an article on the table, "The police are having a hell of a time with the outside growers." So, that might be an interesting subject if it happens in Massachusetts. There are different types of recreational establishments defined in the law. These are taken right out of the Cannabis Control Commission, proposed regulation. A cultivator, as you might know, is somebody who's going to raise the marijuana. You can also have a manufacturer who's going to maybe make edibles or infused products, as it says there. And these can be separate or they can be combined. People can sign up to be any one of these. They can be a testing laboratory, those are also in the law. A retail outlet where you go to buy it. Marijuana cafes, I think those are called social consumption, if I'm not mistaken. Falls in that category. In that category, in the current law, they're talking about allowing you to go to the movie theater and buy infused brownies before you sit down for the movie. So, it may be more encompassing than just a normal cafe. There are a lot of subcategories. And then a marijuana transporter, which is, I guess, unique to Massachusetts, is somebody who doesn't do any of the above, but he moves marijuana from one place to another. I think it can go from, to the retail customer or between facilities. In there, which I didn't put up or we didn't put up, is a micro business, which is a smaller facility that can cultivate, produce product, and deliver, but can't deliver to, but it has to deliver to a retail outlet. It's a small business, a small amount of plants, but they're not allowed to sell to the public. There's also the craft marijuana, which is a cooperative of, I think, it can be six locations for cultivating and three for manufacturing. This is where a group of small farmers would get together, form a cooperative, and it would be a legal entity and they can go into business and do everything but sell to the public. They have to sell to a retail outlet. Some of the things that we've talked about or heard about with these facilities is the heavy electrical uses, there's some pretty high intensity lighting, they grow 24 hours a day. There's a lot of water use, a lot of these are done hydrophonically. I think there's one in Hoyotes going in and they're putting in a big water tank so that the town water supply isn't available, they can keep running the facility for some, so it's sort of like an emergency generator and an emergency water supply.
Well, hydroponics works off of usually water source anyway, like a reservoir of water.
Right. But they're worried that the town might not have water, I guess, so they're actually putting in a storage tank so they can keep running if the water supply is disconnected. I'm guessing water is very important and I guess you don't want to lose the water. Waste water treatment. There was some indication that there might be pesticides used in the processing, which is, I think, is on the next slide. But you have to, they had, and in the regulation, they have to treat the water to the state standards. In a big facility, there could be traffic impacts, you know, the amount of cars, lighting and security, you know, the building has to be lit generally on the outside so that the security features work. Marijuana odors has been an issue. Noise pollution been talked about. So, we're looking at maybe the added law enforcement requirements. A new one that just popped up, I saw the other day, is this thing called gifting, which is happening in Massachusetts now before the law goes in, but it's apparently also happening in California, even though they have, I mean, in Colorado, even though they have laws. Gifting is where you buy a T-shirt for $100 and it comes with a little gift. So, you're not really selling the product, you're giving it to someone.
That's illegal in this state, though.
No, it's not. They're doing it in the --
There's a clause inside the law that actually prohibits selling other items as a trade for --
That's what I thought. I don't hope that's --
It's actually a provision in the law. It's written in the law.
But is that part of the law?
They actually, well, they actually have enforced it. They went to Springfield and arrested people.
All right. Well, anyway, it's another issue for law enforcement. I don't think we have a law enforcement people here. Public health and safety concern. I believe right now, you cannot get marijuana or use marijuana where there's alcohol or smoking. So, I'm reading the regulations correct? Peggy, is that your understanding?
Yes, we have.
So, you couldn't go to the inn and get marijuana, but anywhere else in town, you probably could, you know?
Get loaded on the air.
So, I guess they're concerned about that one, obviously, but...
Well, and part of the concern about the impaired driving is that there's no field sobriety test, like you can't do like a breathalyzer test like you can do with alcohol. You can't, if somebody appears to be, you know, weaving down the road or not, having impaired driving, there isn't a way to evaluate, is this impaired driving from marijuana use?
You should all be aware that that's something that exists, right?
Yeah, it already exists.
I mean, that exists. That has nothing to do with the effect of anything to do with the law, other than the fact that the law says that it's legal. But whether it was legal or not, I mean, people could be smoking marijuana and impaired driving.
Correct. Right.
I think you're saying there's no legal standard for, or method for testing.
There's no legal standard method for testing, but whether there is or not, doesn't, that doesn't change, there's nothing changed.
Right. There is impaired driving right now because there are people who are, there could be impaired driving right now because there's people using marijuana and then driving. What the concern is that if there was increased availability of marijuana in a legal ways, that there could be more people using and more people doing impaired driving.
Or increased availability with regulation may regulate it better. Maybe people will understand it better, not impaired drive. Maybe, you know, maybe it's the opposite of what you're thinking.
These are the kinds of concerns that have been raised around commercial marijuana establishments.
Well, I'm just saying that those are kind of like, you know, blanketed not concerns because they're not, they're not related to legalization of marijuana because they exist whether it's legal or not.
Okay.
You know?
If there were a number of establishments providing it in town, there could be a higher level of it, I think is what we're --
So, right, so that's the question that is --
Right. I guess, I mean, it's as high as the level of people that are consuming the cannabis.
Right.
One question I had, it reads like in the law that the Asheville House could close down one night, not serve liquor, but do marijuana --
We're trying to get clarification from the state.
It sounds like you just can't have them simultaneously.
I think something like that will probably change pretty quick. Because it may be illegal to smoke indoors, so why would they allow people to smoke?
No, I see, well, yeah.
You're not supposed to serve alcohol and marijuana?
In the same, at the same time.
No, I mean, I mean, like, the whole cafe idea seems kind of ridiculous. Like, it may not last.
So, the question that's been raised, the Cannabis Control Commission that's doing the regulations, is whether or not you can have, you're not supposed to have alcohol and marijuana served simultaneously. So, the question is, can you have a facility that is a bar in the afternoon and then allows smoking in the evening? Or does it have to be two separately, separate establishments? And we don't know, that's one of the questions that's been raised to the Cannabis Control Commission, so hopefully they'll clarify that.
No, we're not taking the position. We're trying to share some information that we've collected.
I, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be, try to mean to be combative. I'm not trying to be combative. But I also want to try to give you guys maybe some information that you don't really have, if it seems like you don't have.
So, why don't we let Joe go through the slides? Then we're going to have a bunch of time for discussion. And so, if there's points you want to raise, let's do that in the discussion time.
The citing of establishment, this is where the planning board comes in. The law, now, let's see, I said, keep this straight. We, in the referendum in '16, we passed a referendum, which became a statute in law. Then the government, the state government decided they wanted to get involved, so they modified the statute and then established a cannabis, well, then they gave it to the Cannabis Control Commission, which is trying to write the regulation. So, these are coming, these are in the statute, they're not necessarily in the regulation. I think the regulation says that the marijuana facility or establishment has to comply with local bylaw. This section is telling us how to write the bylaws, what we can write into the bylaw. So, I'm guessing the ways it's going to work, the statute is telling us what we can do and how to do it. The attorney general will decide if we did it correctly and met the statute. And then, the establishment would have to comply with it when they came to town.
And the town is allowed to make by vote any bylaws that they want?
Well, we have to follow what's in the statute. Am I correct, am I phrasing it correctly?
And they can't be unreasonably impractical.
Whatever that means.
Whatever that means.
I bet they're supposed to be --
People are trying, you know, I mean, we've made it legal in our state to do this and people shouldn't be imposing extra boundaries on anyone.
I think that first one in particular, that is going to fall on the attorney general. If the town decides to write a bylaw that we're comfortable with and we then have to send it to the attorney general, they can say, "That's not reasonable," or "It is reasonable" and they can approve it. Then, we can use it when an establishment comes to town. Those are the questions that we're asking, assuming they're, are not unreasonably impractical. What kind of establishments do we want in Conway? What scale do we want? People have told me that we shouldn't have let, oh, it was me, no, the machine shop guy.
Mike Kirkquinn.
We can properly own machines. We shouldn't have allowed them to put that building in Conway. I don't know why. I can't think of any reason why it shouldn't be in Conway. But do we want facilities of that size or bigger? The cannabis law gives different licenses for different sizes of facility, 5,000, 10,000, above 10,000. So, they have, the fee goes up with the size of the facility, but there seems to be no limit to the size. One of the articles that I put out there, a fellow in North Andover wanted to take over a building that was 25 acres, a million square feet. And it got voted down by the town, but he was, he was advocating for the bylaws to allow that.
Where?
In North Andover, now it's called. It was an old telephone building, a loose, or bell telephone building, a million ones.
Well, that's a positive thing, isn't it? It is a very positive thing, wouldn't it be?
And so, in, and in Conway, our current zoning bylaws, we do not have a square footage limit in our zoning bylaws. We have, the limits in our zoning bylaws are that you can't have a business with more than 15 employees on site at a time or more than 50 customers on site at a time. And that's --
Without a special permit.
Without a special permit. You could come for a special permit. Say you wanted to have a restaurant that had 100 people there, you could come for a special permit for that. But what's allowed by right is 15 employees on site, 50 customers on site. We don't have anything about square footage right now.
So, other than parking regulations about parking spaces and what I call the 58, 55 --
Is there parking regulations?
Yeah.
About 20 people, like, to park up and down.
You wouldn't believe we had parking regulations. So, the question we're asking, do you have any sense of what feels right for guns? Do you care? Do you want, do you want a million square feet? I don't think that happens in Conway.
I don't think that that's a concern for Conway because I don't think that's going to, you know, nobody's really going to do that.
Can I ask a question? I feel a little confused. There's lots of ways to do something like this and I'm actually very much in favor of it. You can have small farms doing small scale marijuana that can be inspected and you can know what they're doing to the environment and control, you know, that they're doing eco-friendly kinds of things. Or you can go in a direction which I don't think I would want to go in, making a huge establishment for some, somebody who's really wanting to make a huge amount of money or whatever, in the middle of town. I don't, I don't think that's a really healthy way to go. So, I'm not sure in this language, when you talk about establishments. I mean, I sort of picture individual farmers, people who are gardeners, who may want to earn some money.
And that's the reality of who would really want to do something like that in this town anyway.
Actually, I'm sorry. I'm sorry I came late.
Can we just, can you just back up the slides to show the kinds of establishments we're talking about? We're talking about commercial establishments.
Yeah, but that's the thing, that surprises me.
So, one of the, these are the kinds of establishments --
She might not have been here when I mentioned the cooperative.
Right.
Within these groups, you can also have smaller things like a cooperative, which is six small farm, six locations where you grow, they get together and form a co-op and they can process it so they can make brownies. The farmers can get together and grow the marijuana and maybe make some product if they want to. And they can't sell to the retail market, they have to sell to a store, but the farmers can get together and grow crops.
Right. And that, right, you're trying --
Now, in California, they tried to pass a law to limit the size of the marijuana facility to 10 acres, but it didn't pass. And they were trying to make it easier for the small farmers to be in the business. And they were sort of writing out the big suppliers and trying to write in the smalls. It didn't pass. So, that would be --
Can I just sort of explain what we're doing here for this evening for those folks who came in late? We have this agenda on the wall here. We're going through a slideshow with explanations of what the current laws, you know, information about the kinds of establishment, commercial establishments that are possible in the state and sort of laying the framework of this is what's possible. Then we're going to have a discussion about exactly the kind of concerns you're talking about. And we're going to have a poll at the end about, with, okay, do you want, which kinds of establishments do you want or not want? What are your concerns? So, what I would suggest is, right now, if we can go through the slides, get the information so we all have a certain amount of information, then we'll have the discussion. I saw you wanted to take a picture of some of the information. We're happy to send you a PDF of this slideshow. Anybody who wants to, if you write your email address on the signing sheet, we'll send you a PDF of it. So, go ahead, Joe.
We don't, okay, we don't have a medical marijuana zoning district. We don't have any medical marijuana facility. But the second question is more, maybe more relevant. Now, there's some pictures of a retail store and a healing house, green house. I guess that's just an indoor drawing.
It's a cultivation.
In Engelwood, Colorado, so it's a cultivation. So, the question we're asking is, do you want us to sort of create a zone in town where all this would be focused or is it a free-for-all? Right now, we have a pretty liberal bylaw. You could put one of these facilities anywhere in Conway. Do we want to do that or do we want to try to, like, most of the towns are putting these not in residential district. Our whole town is pretty much agricultural residential, so we don't have, we don't have that option at this point. But Shellburn is just proposing a bylaw. They're saying not to put these in residential, but keep it in the industrial, commercial zones.
It couldn't actually be absolutely anywhere, couldn't be within 500 feet of --
The default is 500 feet from the school. But they're trying to change that to where children congregate, is that?
In the regulations, it references schools, daycare centers, and where children congregate. It's two, it's, there's two locations where it's brought up. One has the broader definition, so one of the comments that was at, there was a listening session recently by the Cannabis Control Commission and folks said, you know, it should be consistent with the broader definitions.
And the default is 500 feet? Can you make it more or less?
It's, you can make it less. Whether you can make it more is another question. Because some communities may decide that 500 is not adequate.
So, that would be another question we would, we're trying to get a sense for. The, my takeaway from that meeting, one of them was, which was put well in the paper, is keep it away from the young kids, you know? So, if you subscribe to that, then you're going to want to keep it 500 feet or more, maybe. You know, some towns apparently will opt to go less than that, depending on how they feel about protecting their children. Are you interested in a marijuana cafe? It could be a simple cafe, you know, we were jokingly when we were working on the Cedar Center, we were going to put it in the Cedar Center and have a lot of happy cedars in town.
It was a church zone.
It could be a traditional cafe, but it could also be the Asheville House, if this thing about not serving alcohol is again. You could go to the Asheville House on Wednesday night and do something on Wednesday afternoon. Take it on Asheville, because we got people who are going to Asheville. I guess it could be the Conway Inn, too. So, how do you feel? That's one of our questions that we're asking you to put on the, on the survey later, is how do you feel about, you know, a cafe where you can go and smoking at night? Other than in a place that serves liquor?
Right. And there's a process for, there's a special process for marijuana, for allowing marijuana cafes that involves, you know, having to do both a town meeting vote and then also a ballot question. So, it's a special process. It's different than, like, if Conway decided, yes, we want to have cultivators, yes, we want to have independent testing labs, yes, we want to have retail stores, that could be done in a bylaw format. This would require a different level. Is that, am I correct in how I'm saying that?
The bar is much higher. The hurdle is much higher if you want to have a cafe.
Yeah, there has to be a, there has to be a vote for a cafe?
Correct.
Now, is this the section that covers going to the movie theater and getting infused brownies? Does that fall under the cafe section?
Uh, it's not clear.
It's not clear.
The whole mixed use was something that came out of the regulations.
In the regulation, Peggy said, there's a mixed use thing where you can, as a, not as your primary business, but as a secondary part, like, you might be able to go to the movie theater and buy some infused products.
Like, somebody was thinking they should put a dispensary inside a movie theater.
To sign a petition.
Now, the governor stepped in just in the last couple of days and said that this commission should maybe pull back and just work on what's in the law. I think what's happening, they're doing all these listening sessions and they're getting all these, what probably they perceive as good ideas. So, they've added all this, "Oh, we got to worry about the small farmer," and, "Oh, we got to worry about the movie theater." And I think the governor is saying, "Why don't you go back and do what you were supposed to do?" And then, I think that's what he said. It was in the paper, he just put an article in the paper, that the commission should get back to the task they were assigned to do. But they, it's sort of, project is sort of growing, I think. I, we used to call it Project Creep when I was working. What types of reviews or factors should we consider if we are going to write a bylaw? As we said, we have the special permit if you're a certain size, number of people, number of customers. Do we want to have different lot sizes? Do we want to keep these further away from residential houses? Or can somebody buy a lot next door to you and put it in a store, right next door to your house? Setbacks from school to school right now, we believe, is 500 feet. Do we want to worry about hours of operation? I think water consumption and energy is going to be a difficult one, but apparently there have been some issues with odors and possibly noise, mostly odors, odors from whatever we're --
Cow farts, right. Cow farts, right.
Hazards materials, we, we've been told that there are some pesticides still being used. I don't, I think the craft farmer would probably try to go organic and maybe not do that, but we're not sure, we, you know, we haven't confirmed that. There probably will be some kind of fertilizers or plant enhancers used. They use a lot of light, both for growing and like, might be lights for security, external lights on the building so the security police can monitor the facility. Sinage, I went to one, the listening session, there was one fellow that was passionate about that they shouldn't be able to use the marijuana leaf because it's false advertising. And when you think of a leaf, you think of something that's wholesome and healthy. And his argument was this is everything but wholesome and healthy. So, I mean, those are the kinds of comments that people are making. But signage, there is some limitations. And I think you can't advertise to enhance children, I think in some way, Peggy may know more about that.
Yeah, there's pretty detailed regulations to try and, you know, make the advertising not geared towards children. So there's a lot of restrictions in terms of the advertising. And, you know, there's been lots of concerns about the edible products not looking like candy or other things that might.
Dummy beers or whatever.
Might be mistaken by a child for something to eat.
Typical, the size and appearance of building or the size of the building lot, I think we mentioned that earlier. If you make a lot smaller, that may be more of an encouragement for the farmer rather than the big industry. There was, there were a number of people at the meeting, I think, that were in favor of making sure that small farmer was included in this and it was a little easier for him to get into the business, screening for residential neighborhoods and properties. Part of the law currently requires a host community agreement. This is something that would be executed by the selectmen. It would be an agreement between the establishment and the town selectmen as to how, how they would perform in the town. It could also include impact fees to the town. If we could show that this was gonna take a half a police officer or, then those kinds of things can be included in the agreement. Do you know of any other things that are included? They have to be substantiated, I think.
I haven't, I haven't seen one of the, these host community agreements, but, you know, presumably if there was higher levels of wastewater treatment required or things of that nature. But some of this is unknown at this point because we don't have experience or we don't have any examples yet of those, those community agreements.
This will, it has to be reasonably related to the cost and can't be more than three percent of the gross sales for what, for five years. And then it can also be a local tax option with some people, I think Tom Lesser spoke up at the last meeting when we did the moratorium, saying that we could make a hundred thousand dollars a year. I think that three percent, I mean, you have to do three million dollars worth of business. I, I don't know how practical or impractical that is. I don't know if we could do three million dollars worth of marijuana. Some of the key dates.
Maybe if you put one of those big facilities up.
March fifteenth is when the Cannabis Control Commission is supposed to publish their regulations. They're being asked to go slow and careful, I guess. So whether they'll make it on time, I think they're now talking about some kind of phased rollout where they, I don't know exactly what that means. They'll lose certain, they'll roll them out in, in, in small groups, I guess. In April, they're supposed to take applications. And ideally, our bylaws will be in place by April first, but we do have a moratorium. Now, if someone wanted to go into town, part of the process is they have to get a letter from the planning board saying that they comply with the bylaws. So it's, right now, we would have to say there's a moratorium in town. If we lift it, when we lift the moratorium, we would then have to say, assuming we didn't write any bylaws, that yes, it's provisionally approved, but they need a special permit if they're going over fifteen customers, I mean, fifteen employees and fifty customers. So it would be sort of a conditional approval.
And you're thinking that that it is, it would fall on the planning board to notify the.
I believe that's.
It's also not clear.
It's not clear.
It's not clear from the regulations, the processes and what, how, it says they will notify the towns that there's an application and the town has, I believe, sixty days to respond whether or not it's in compliance with the town regulations.
With the town by, well, they'll say zoning bylaws too, right?
Yeah, it's all, all.
I, I assume it was planning board, but even if you wrote it, we'd have to tell you that they're in compliance with that zoning bylaw?
So we'd ask them to notify the select boards, the planning board, building inspector, which is often the first stop for determination of whether or not you're in compliance with your zoning bylaws. Board of Health, Board of Health gets involved in regulations. But the process isn't clear.
But to go back to Tom's question, they need a letter from the town saying that they're in compliance or reasonably in compliance with the town.
But if you don't provide the letter within their timeframe, then it's assumed you're in compliance.
So our standard letter would say.
So potentially someone could open and operate a business without the town knowing until the town found out?
Well, presumably they're, they're supposed, they're supposed to have a host community agreement negotiated with the town and submit that with their application. So I would think it's unlikely that the town wouldn't know about it, but what the town might not, it's depending on how the process is unfolded in terms of finding out whether you're in compliance with the local regulations, sixty days isn't that long of a timeframe for it to come into town, have the evaluation and then.
If you're talking about buildings and, yeah, that's not.
It's not a huge amount of time. So for, for small towns that have part-time town administrators, volunteer select boards, volunteer planning boards, you just, everybody needs to have a heads up that there's this time clock ticking and you need to pay attention to these things when they come in and make sure that you get your response back.
And with normal planning board activities, you're, the clock starts when it goes to the town clerk. I don't even think the law requires it to go to the town clerk.
The regulations aren't clear.
They weren't written by people that normally write bylaws, so they, they sort of missed the step of going to the town clerk. Right now, if you want a special permit, you have to submit it to the town clerk and that starts the clock for the planning boards. But that's not in the current regulations. There's a lot of fluff. Should we limit the number of establishments? The law, there's a provision in the statute, I guess, that we can both limit the number. You can limit the number, the types, so you can say we want to see a cultivator, we don't want to have a retail store or vice versa. You can, you can allow owl or you can allow some and you can limit the number. Those are all things the town is free to look at and, as we move forward. So if we think we want mostly growers and one retail store, we can do that. If we want ten retail stores and one grower, we can do that. So there's a lot of options to the town if we want to go that direction. Question we have for you is, do you think locations, are you worried about locations in town where this could happen? I believe that's still some kind. I assume they're extracting the chemicals.
Extraction machine.
Yeah, there's an extraction machine.
On the left side.
And the other one, that's a manufacturing facility where they're creating, manufacturing marijuana infused products.
Oh, that's probably like some sort of jigging machine there.
And one of the persons at the hearing said, these are chemicals. That when you, this is, this is not your grandmother's grass, you know? This is not what you smoked when you were a kid. They're extracting these chemicals, they're making them. One person made an argument that we have some data on the use of marijuana, but not on some of these concentrated chemicals.
There's, there's a hundred and sixty known cannabinoids. It's the most diverse plant on the earth. So those extractions are things that people are using to like, you know, cause, like, cure diseases and things. I mean, people are not having seizures because of that kind of stuff. So, I mean, they're not chemicals. There's no, they're, they're compounds.
Yeah, I guess they are, but.
Medical compound. I mean, they're naturally, they're naturally, they come from a natural source.
I didn't say they were bad. I was just saying, they're not the, the grass, they're not the weed.
No, I don't know. I just keep hearing the same old talking point and I've heard like a million times from people and it's kind of odd. You know, it's the same old grass, you know, like a laughing joke about things.
The argument that's being made is we don't have a lot of data on the effect of marijuana.
We don't have the data because, because people have been obstructing the progress. That's why we don't have the data. And the more we obstruct the chemists and the people that know how to do these things, the, the longer it's gonna take to get that data.
Okay, we probably don't have to cover this, but this is what we would do if we were gonna go ahead here after the hearing. If we decide to change the bylaws, we would have an official public hearing on whatever regulations we came up with. And it would be a second, maybe a third time to discuss these and then it would go to town meeting and then it would get approved by the attorney general. Two-thirds vote at town meeting to approve it.
Right, and then it goes to, to the attorney general.
We already talked about it. It's one of the only man establishments.
Yeah, okay. So are there questions of like information that was here?
Is there information? One question I have is, we did get a letter from someone in town who said we should pursue hemp because I guess hemp has more of the chemicals that are used for medicinal purposes and less of the psychoactive.
There's higher, there's higher CBD levels.
CBD levels.
CBD levels, and then it has all kinds of other uses. So that, so that, right, one of the, one of the.
Marijuana is not as good for the medical side.
Right, one of the points that that person was making was that if there's farmers in Conway who are interested in pursuing, growing, you know, a crop that could do good things, that hemp could be something to consider instead of, instead of or in addition to marijuana. So are there other, are there questions about the slideshow? I want to, again, appreciate Peggy for helping us put, for putting this together. Thank you, Sloan from Furcon, thank you very much, and Joe for showing us through that. Are there questions, like informational kind of questions?
And if any information you want to give us.
Right, and then, and then what, from, given all of this and given what you walked in the door with, what do you think? Should Conway have commercial establishments related to marijuana? What kinds? Are there, do you have thoughts about location, thoughts about size, thoughts about any of that? Tell us or tell each other, what do you think?
I think some town, not necessarily in Franklin County, but some towns are actively soliciting, trying to get these people to come to their town. They see it as a financial advantage and they see the taxation, I guess, of it.
I think that people that are, you know, looking to be successful with a dispensary is, aren't really going to be looking to put one in the center of Conway. And I don't think it's gonna last very long if they do. You know, just like any other, I mean, there's not, there's very few successful businesses in town and it's probably pretty hard to keep them going, right?
There's one going in Greenfield, right?
Medical marijuana dispensary.
No, I mean, I mean just businesses in general. I mean, you gotta look at the history of the town, whether, you know, I mean, who's really looking to build a big facility in this town? I mean, logistically, does it really make sense? You know?
Yeah.
I, I just don't think, you know, you're talking about setting up all these rules to limit people, or maybe you already have a system in play to limit people to fifteen employees. So, I mean, how big of a facility do you think we could really put in here with fifteen employees?
I'm taking it you're just for small business. Is that a point?
I do, I, I am too, but I'm not, I'm not for limiting people. So say, you know, maybe, you know, somebody started their small business in town here and realized that they had to, you know, expand, you know, wouldn't want to. I, I just, I don't, I don't understand, yeah, I don't understand the whole, why, why these, there's a group already creating all these laws that are taking a lot of our community's concerns into consideration and have taken a lot of them into consideration. I think it's been pretty well crafted. I mean, yeah, they have missed a lot of the logistical things that you guys are talking about, but once again, our state is going to, I'm sure, delay things before a lot of that comes out. I mean, the law already said too that, you know, dispensaries can't be opened or that the medical dispensaries will get the, the first go around, so they'll be the first ones to open. I mean, it, it just seems like a lot of wasted time.
So you're thinking.
On something that won't ever really affect our community much. And, you know, when somebody puts up their facility, they're not going to be asking you to come visit them. So, you know, I mean, like, it's not, it's not like, you know, if I was to open a growing facility, I'm not gonna invite people to come there. You know, because it's, it's not like, you know, that's, it's a secretive kind of, you know, they don't want people stealing their stuff.
A growing facility would be limited by the number of people, not the customer. The retail store would more likely be regulated by that. And that, and let me clarify, if you have under fifteen and under fifty, you could do it by right, which means you can just go ahead and do it. You don't have to come to the planning board. This law is a little different, it says you have to come to the town no matter how big it is.
Right, and what I'm saying is, is there's, those things have been put forth in this law. I don't think there is a necessity, and like I said in the town meeting, I don't think it's a necessity at all to have done this. I mean, I think this is a waste of, you know, time, really.
Okay, so, thanks. So do other folks have thoughts about, do we need bylaws? If we need bylaws, what things would you want or not want in the bylaws? What kinds of businesses would you like to see or not like to see in Conway?
Tom, I have a question. Do you have information about states that are already down this path and if they have any thoughts on how they might have, if, if things are working for them, if things aren't working for them?
Foley the cannabis board was canvassing a bunch of states that already had it legalized, try to come up with a list of their problems and accomplishments and try to introduce that into the states, our state's regulations.
Right, I mean, one of the things that I heard in a meeting this week was that Colorado has seen an increase in impaired driving with accidents caused by impaired driving. And they, you know, and they have the concern about not being able to do field sobriety tests. But I, but I don't know in terms of, you know, right, I don't know, Peggy, if you know anything about other states.
So the list of potential impacts was taken from literature from around the country where, you know, it has been legalized and it's been large-scale organizations, industry, I guess it's referred to, that have come in and put in cultivation facilities and put in these manufacturing facilities. So I think for Franklin County towns, it's a question of scale. So, you know, there's a twenty thousand square foot facility proposed in, in Berniston and that's a pretty large facility for most of our towns. I think, you know, the retail is gonna be driven by the amount of demand, so if you're a smaller community, are you likely to have a retail center? Unless there's a traffic volume to support that, perhaps not. But if, if they need to have locations to grow cultivation facilities, our land is probably less expensive in western Mass than it is in the eastern part of the state. And they need to grow within the state boundary because they can't transport across state lines because then they're gonna be in violation of federal law. So that suggests that, you know, one area that may impact our rural towns that have a lot of residential ag are these cultivation facilities. And then you have to think about what scale is appropriate in those neighborhoods. And so if you're used to seeing a barn that's, you know, five or seven thousand square feet, how's a twenty thousand square foot building gonna look? Or if you have an outdoor growing operation, it's gotta be secured. So that implies that there's gonna be fencing around it and lighting and security and how is that gonna look in your residential ag area? So I think if you think about each of these facilities, some towns have industrial parks and so testing, cultivation. some towns have industrial parks, and so testing, cultivation, you know, manufacturing facilities, those are uses that would fit more in an industrial park. And then you need to think about what's appropriate for more rural.
So, part of the, part of the regulations, right, says that, that, you know, you obstruct the view, right? Your neighbors can't see it.
You're supposed to screen.
Oh, we were suggesting it.
Screen.
Yeah, you're asking if it should be screened.
So, I mean, that is, that is a regulation, that's a law, right? I mean, that, that is a law in the, in the, in the home grow campus law.
Well, actually, their screening is more to make sure that the, that the, the emergency officials and the public safety officials can have a clear view from a security standpoint. That, that's a different, I think, concern about making sure that you've got a secure facility and there isn't any problems with theft going on versus screening to protect a neighbor who's moved into a rural area not expecting a commercial or a larger scale use, appearing next to them and providing some visual buffer. And so, if a town wants to specify what that kind of screening is or requires-
That would be a zoning bylaw.
And so, you know, most towns have setbacks in their zoning bylaws.
But you, you had mentioned the outdoor growing, and what I was saying was, in the law, it says you can't, you can't be visi-
No, it says it has to be secure.
I think that's, that's for-
It can't be visible in the, in the, I know in the home grow law, so.
That's, that's related to personal growing in your backyard. This is not different.
So, the, I mean, I would imagine the, so, a regular manufacturer, somebody that had a hundred, couldn't, couldn't be visible.
You can only grow six plants, right?
In the, I mean, your personal backyard growing six plants is not supposed to be visible, I think, from outside.
From your neighbors or from the street?
I don't know, is there anything in the regulations about visibility from, like, say you had a field, say you had a 20-acre field of outdoor grown marijuana. I don't know whether that's, you know, likely around here. Whether that was visible or not, I don't know if there's anything in the state regulations.
Mary, can we use the T guys as an example? Down on Route 5, the glowing-
That's per, that's growing.
-plastic house down there?
The greenhouse is the big greenhouse.
The pink greenhouse on Riverina House.
Yeah, right, yeah, right on 5 and 10.
If someone wanted to put one of those that was twice as big in Conway, how would you feel about that? A present bylaw doesn't prevent that. So, if someone wanted to put one of those in Conway, and-
Well, I mean, it kind of would because there's more than 15 employees.
It's got the purple glow to it.
How many employees do you think run that, that greenhouse?
Well, they just need a special permit to have it.
They don't even need a special permit. I don't think there's-
No, I'm just wondering how many people you think, I mean, like, to run that greenhouse, it's gonna be a lot of people.
No, wait, you're missing the point. If you have less than 15 people, you don't need that permit. If you wanna go over 15, you need to have a planning board special permit here.
I'd like to go back to the state question, just what's been learned from other states. There's one thing that I've heard, from California, has to do with taxation. And the, what, what they've seen happen, and it sure is happening in many places and will continue to happen, is that for small growers, to be able to meet the tax requirement can be really challenging. And they can't raise their prices because then what other people are doing is just going black market. And so, the more taxing, that's what I'm saying, is the more taxing there is, the more taxation there is, the harder it is for small and medium-sized businesses because of the black market. And so, one way of maybe thinking about that is to, what I wonder is if it's possible to use some of the energy and resources to inspect the facilities and to have the inspection fees sort of generate something, and have it be from that angle rather than taxation, so that things are more above board. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Not sure if I agree with it.
So, you're, so you're working with the legal establishment in the town, so they, you're working together, not against each other. So, you permit and you license, and then the town gets the money from that. And then, it just makes more sense than-
But I think the town can do two, three percenters, right?
Yeah. Right, so we could go up to 3% on the community fee and up to 3% on a local tax.
Sales tax.
So, there's gonna, there's already sales taxes in the state level, and then the town can add, and this is where many towns are thinking about, as an income stream to the town, is the, the having a sales tax, a local sales tax. And so, Ron was next, and then Tom, and then me.
So, the local sales tax is only at the dispensary level, I believe, right? At the point of, of sale. Whereas, the other one could be associated with the five-year, whatever it's called.
Community impact.
Community agreement.
Is that right? There's a community agreement, can the community agreement impose a, like a tax on the growers?
On the growers.
It's two separate things. So, the-
I know it is.
The, the community agreement, you would have to figure out what impact it was having on police or other municipal services document that, and then you could-
That's the community impact.
Then you could have your fee.
So, then, in response to your question, the farmers aren't really getting taxed unless there's this community assessment thing. The 3% tax is just at the dispensary.
Is that the, is that the retail, the retail level?
It's at the sale to the consumer.
Retail level, not the farm level. So, it's not like, it's not like the farmers, say the farmers grow $100,000 worth of product, they're not getting, that's not a sales tax, that's like, and they're selling it wholesale to the-
But they could have a community. Anyway, wouldn't, if, if the dispensary's being charged 3%, I mean, that, that is gonna cost the growers as well.
I think, I think the Cannabis Controlled Commission needs to make it clear. It's pretty clear that there's sales tax on retail products, but there's some question about whether there could be-
I was reading a piece of that at one point. It looked like it-
If, you know, if you're a producer or some other kind of wholesale, selling to wholesale. So, all that is, needs to be a little clearer. What is clear is retail is a 3%.
Like the sort of standard retail sales kind of taxes.
In Europe, they call it a value-added tax.
So, Tom, and then Andy, and then Beth?
The current draft of the town meeting warrant for this coming May does include an article proposing a 3% tax.
Sales tax on retail.
If anybody comes in, yeah, just for your information.
Okay. Andy?
I just wanted to know, I think we've discussed this, but if we have a grower or we have a retail establishment, anybody who's selling anything, there's gonna be security involved and bank strucks and whatever, because it's cash business, right? Because of the federal law makes it illegal for them to bank, right?
Right.
So, that's just something to think about.
Right, if, all of these businesses will be cash, on a cash basis, not on a, you know, they're not gonna be taking credit cards or checks or whatever, because they can't use federal banks, because it's against federal law. So, that's one of the things that are people, besides it being a high-value product in terms of thinking about security, there's also that there's a lot of cash that moves in and out. There was, there was something about in Colorado, it's like the armored cars go in with the, you know, go in with the cash and then they come out with the product. But there's, it sounds like it would be a good business for the armored car business. But, and then Beth had a, Beth had something to say.
Oh, I just read this morning that Berkeley, in California, Berkeley just decreased the taxes that they were charging to newly established recreational marijuana businesses, because they felt they were, they would be losing businesses to towns surrounding them. Just bringing that up.
Right, that, that's one of the things, right, that it could sort of pit town, it's sort of like in New Hampshire, not having a sales tax, so there are all these businesses over the New Hampshire line that compete with Massachusetts businesses. There could be an issue of, you know, which towns have which amount of taxes and makes that more or less attractive to both the business owner and the shoppers.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't happen in Conway, but the other thing that we heard at the meeting, I think, is that in Greenfield, they have a lot of federal housing, and technically, no, none of these people in federal housing can smoke marijuana or have marijuana in the facility. So, that we need to have, their argument was, we need to have cafes available for the low-income subsidized housing.
The argument there is that maybe there needs to be some changes to those laws-
I know, I was just interested.
To come up to date with the laws that we have.
So, if you have subsidized housing in your town, federally subsidized, section eight, is that what it's called?
Section eight.
Then technically, that would be a marijuana-free zone, or they can get kicked out. So, that was the argument for having cafes available, is to support the, that community, huh?
Other questions, concerns?
Yeah, I'd be concerned about the environmental impact of, like, a large facility. I'd be really concerned about that. You know, I don't understand how those things get regulated, but in any of these small towns, that's a big deal. And I think we all wanna preserve the farmland that we have as long as possible, and wildlife, and drinking water, and all these things. I don't know what the, what the load of this industry could be.
I, I suspect the host agreement could be written that you have to use a certain amount of recycled water. I don't know whether you could tell people they have to put some method of generating electricity, supply panels or something on their facility. That might have to come into host agreement. I don't know if we could write a bylaw to that effect, but it's something you could look at, I guess.
Tom, and then, and then you.
I was, I just happened to be talking with somebody today about water levels in town. And the example, there's, there's two abutting properties, and one of them gets three gallons per minute, and the abutting property gets 60 gallons per minute.
Wow.
And, you know, if, if a place is, is gonna use any more than like a household's worth of water, which is, you know, what, what the town has gotten by on, it might be worth exploring some kind of maximum draw, or at least study that shows that whatever you're planning to draw isn't gonna affect your neighbor's water levels.
Yeah.
It's pretty hard.
I wonder if the state's gonna come up with the water regulations for marijuana users or growers, like you do for your commercial storefronts. Like, we have to have a meter in our, our store, and we have to pay so many cents a gallon to use our own water.
Interesting.
You have a well?
Because the state says they own all the water, and, and if you have a havoc problem with your well because of salt pollution or whatever else might happen to it, it's your responsibility, not the state's. They own the water, but they won't help you keep it purified. And that's right in the rules and regulations.
For, for a, for your type of commercial stuff.
And it got a commercial status.
So, I would think that they would incorporate that into something to do with like a large growing facility or something like that.
Well, there are people-
I hope they would.
There are people who, you know, the, the green community people, the people that are encouraging solar and no pipelines, are concerned about the energy and water consumption from marijuana. And they're saying, we need to do something about that, you know? That we need to regulate somehow the consumption of electricity and water.
Yeah, it could be a point of pride to say, wouldn't it be great if we had growers here who could label their product, like, environmentally friendly on some level, or if there was some, you know, some stamp of approval for that?
Yeah, the regulations.
Yeah, I don't know if the town-
Do we have any of those types of regula, I'm sorry?
Go ahead. No, you keep going. You wait.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was actually done.
Okay, okay, then go ahead.
So, do we actually have any law regulations for agriculture in town?
Not that, not that I'm aware of, no.
Very many regulations for anything.
Basically.
Very liberal community.
Right.
That might be something to, to look at, you know, maybe there's other towns in, in the state or even in other states that have, you know, water rules that are related to agriculture.
Right, so-
Because that is, you know, I mean, that's the type of, you know, consumption is, it's water related to agriculture.
Right, so if somebody wanted to grow, have a greenhouse with a 10-acre greenhouse and grow basil, you know, hyperponically, what would be our water concerns there? I mean, in some ways, it's moderately irrelevant that it's marijuana. It's, if there was, even though marijuana cultivation is not considered agriculture, but in, in, you know, but as far as impact on the community, would another, if somebody wanted to grow, you know, hydroponic or something that was a high water use crop in Conway, would we be concerned about that in town? Are, are there questions, other questions, comments, or can we go to the, fill out your little form thing and eat lots more snacks so we don't have to take them back with us thing, or take like doggy bags for like tomorrow's lunch?
Sure, absolutely.
Other questions, comments? This has been helpful for me. Helpful for me. Other questions?
Maybe this is obvious, but I just can't imagine a small town like Conway creating some kind of a restricted zone, like a commercial zone. I mean, this is agricultural space, right? It's, I'm just speaking the obvious.
Well, we do have, I mean, we have different, we have like an industrial zone, which is OESCO, and that's the only, and then the rest is, is residential agricultural. But we also have like the by-right solar zones, you know, like where you can put up solar farm without having to get, you know, extra permission. So, there could be the sort of by-right zone or the no-go zone. I mean, we could create some. Tom?
Peggy, could you speak to the treatment of marijuana production as agriculture?
It is not considered an agricultural use.
Even for a farmer and a co-op?
That's correct. The, there was state legislation that made it very clear that growing of marijuana was not considered an agricultural use.
For, for the zoning purposes, right?
For zoning purposes, that, that, that there's no zoning exemption for this type of cultivation.
Currently, over five-
So, they want me, I'm sorry.
Over five acres, you know, they, there's, you can't really restrict agriculture. Under five acres, you can't, there's more. And so, they're saying for purposes of zoning, it's not considered.
It doesn't have, there's a, a section of the zoning that exempts certain uses, like educational facilities, agriculture, where you can't apply your zoning to those. And they made, they made the law, they made a change to the law to make it very clear that this type of cultivation is not considered an agricultural use.
So, therefore, we could impose.
So, we can regulate marijuana cultivation differently than we can regulate basil cultivation?
Yeah, basil cultivation would be considered an agricultural use. So, if it's on a property that's five or more acres, you cannot apply your zoning to that. That's allowed, it has to be allowed by right. You can't do a special permit process.
So, if the, if you wanna use your, your over-five-acre basil growing, hydroponic basil growing, we have nothing to say about it?
They follow whatever the state regulations are. I think the key for Conway is, if, you know, the way your, your zoning bylaws are, are written, are you, it's really hard to correlate 15 employees to square footage, given how difficult that is. You'd have to go in and do some research about, okay, 10,000 square foot facility typically has X number of employees. Otherwise, you don't really know what scale you're allowing by right.
It's also hard to enforce.
I think the communities I've started working with, they're thinking that this is a special permit process for any type of marijuana establishment, so that they have the opportunity to review, review the application, make sure that there's adequate conditions placed on it, have a public hearing so the neighbors can have an opportunity to have input, and then decide whether or not to grant that special permit.
And the conditions are kind of idiosyncratic, right? There's no, there's no sort of set of, you can impose these conditions but not those conditions. They just have to be reasonable.
Well, the special permit process allows you to approve it, approve it as it's presented, approve it with conditions, or deny the special permit. So, it's a discretionary permit. Your zoning bylaws have to be reasonable.
The conditions could just have to be reasonable.
Presumably, you have to, most towns' special permit section has criteria, and the criteria are things like protection of environmental resources, for example. So, if you're concerned about water withdrawal, then, and you got a really large-scale facility proposed, and you were concerned about the impacts on private, other private wells, you would probably want some information about how that was gonna impact, or if you were concerned about wastewater treatment, if you were concerned about odors. So, the special permit process basically gives the town the opportunity to review things. If you were concerned about lighting, particularly- If you were concerned about lighting, particularly adjacent properties or, you know, light pollution in the night sky, you have the opportunity to, you know, require cutoff fixtures or whatever the other mechanisms, you know, maybe there's some shielding that could be done so that you don't have a glowing greenhouse 24 hours a day.
And that, that's for properties that would require special permits at this point. And I think one of the questions here is, do we want to require that sort of thing for operations that might not require a special permit? But can, can somebody on the planning board speak to the current conditions that are applicable to special permits?
Pretty much what she said, we have sort of the standard environmental question. I, I think that, my opinion is we should add a square footage to our special permit process, whether we, whether it's for marijuana or not, but I think we might want to write a separate section for marijuana, that if we're worried about specific levels of light, you know, I mean, there's, if it's a greenhouse environment, it's going to be light, so it's going to be a question of the intensity and how much light.
Light and water consumption.
Or they have to grow in enclosed building where the light doesn't escape. If you don't want pollution of the night sky, then if you don't want, I can see them all from here. If you don't want to see that, you would have to require it to be in a building.
I think the idea behind like a greenhouse would be that you're, you know, you're trying to be environmentally friendly by using light in the times that you would need it. So, you know, they have these saying, like, you know, there's products out there that do things like light deprivation so that, you know, they screen out light at certain times and maybe you would supplement light at certain times a day and maybe you could limit those light things to maybe the early parts of the morning and, and not the early parts of night, you know, things like that.
But that's what the special permit, it allows the town to look at that. I, you know, the, the greenhouses and if you wanted to have, you know, the buildings resemble barns, for example, I don't know if that's going to be allowed, if that'll be reasonable, but I'm thinking in terms of what sort of fits into the agricultural areas in Franklin County and there aren't a lot of, you know, metal buildings right now across the countryside. So what, what, what type of, you know, design standards does the town want to encourage for reuse of facilities, like some towns that have vacant mills that have good water and sewer infrastructure or those places where they would like to see those buildings reused?
Right, and so, and so for us, one of the things that we would need to decide is, do we want to make, well, there's the whole issue of the size, or do, do we want to make that, you know, any commercial marijuana establishment would need to go through a special permit process? That could be something we could...
You're saying that's what other towns are...
We could write into our zoning, that could be something we write into our zoning.
I think that should be, that's one of the first things you should want to do.
Would the, would the special permit process be defined? I mean, it doesn't, the way it's planned, it just didn't seem like it was a defined process.
Yeah, so what you could, what I recommend you do is go to townofconway.com and under the left-hand column, there's downloads and forms and you can see our current zoning bylaws and we have a whole process for what you have to do to get a special permit. And it explains the kind of things that Peggy was talking about, you know, getting community input, public hearings, what kinds of conditions you can apply. And what a special permit process does is it allows community input into what's happening versus business right now, if, you know, without a special permit, you know, businesses that don't require a special permit, you just do your business, you just go, you set it up, you do whatever, the neighbors don't have any comment, that there's no control. The special permit process allows the community to have some input. It doesn't say you can't do the kind of business you want, it can put conditions on it. And that could be like, whether we get into any specifics with zoning, with a zoning bylaw related to marijuana, we could do one that says if you want to have a commercial, you know, commercial establishment, marijuana establishment, you need to go through the special permit, you need to apply for a special permit. And then we could make, we could additionally, you know, addition to that, it's like cell towers. In Conway, we have a process that you can't come in and build a cell tower in Conway without going through a special permit process and we have a section of the bylaw that's about cell towers that describes some of the, you know, it's, it's very parallel in some ways. It's like we came up with, what are the, the sort of standards around cell towers in Conway and use a special permit process to go through that. We could do a similar thing, a parallel kind of thing around there.
The group that's concerned, the Green Community Group, there, I think they were like proposing that if you built one of these facilities, an indoor one, that you would for instance have to use the most efficient lighting. You would have to use currently like an LED light so that you were energy efficient from day one. That's the kind of things that they're talking about.
I was just saying, it seems like a lot of people are maybe in agreement that maybe there should be, you know, if, if somebody wants to, it seems like a lot of people don't want a big facility in town. Right, or that's kind of a something that you'd want to review before having something like that happen. So maybe that's something the town should consider is that before people build 10,000 plus square foot buildings, that there is consideration.
Right.
Is consideration what?
Well, right, you know, well, that's what, that's what I was saying about the special permit and what is, what is the criteria of the special permit?
Well, I think...
I mean, well, I haven't read it or seen it.
So I'll just give you an example, a lot of towns for retail facilities...
They're already written criteria.
I need pencils.
They're anonymous.
So, anybody else need one to write on and they can have one to write?
That may get the going on too. We're all anonymous here. That's how we designed it.
All right, we can fill that, please? Good, good.
How are they, they think they're going to open cafes in the state? How are they going to figure that out logistically?
It's a petition. You have to have 10% registered vote.
Like, like how are they going to deal with the legalities of it? Because you, if somebody goes and eats an edible, or if somebody goes and drinks a beer and goes to a bar, the bar could be liable for their whatever. Somebody eats an edible, I mean, like come on at some point in time and, I mean, that just seems logistically like not possible. And the smoking thing, and the smoking thing, like how do you smoke indoors if you're not allowed to smoke within 25 feet of a building or 50 feet of a building?
Did I read correctly that the edibles, that it takes longer for the effect, so you tend to overeat them? I read somewhere that one of the issues with them is the effect doesn't occur as quickly? So you tend to eat more of it, you tend to overeat these and then you're in trouble.
What they say, what they say is take a small bite and see how you feel in an hour or so.
I guess there were like liquids that people would take and this is like one dose and maybe some people...
Texture.
They would have another one.
Well, that's what, that's what I was saying, you know, you take a small bite and you wait an hour, you wait an hour and a half.
Yeah, apparently they were impatient.
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
So then we...
I don't know. Why don't have a...
It'll be okay, everybody will be fine, nobody's died yet.
When you guys get your papers done, I'll take them and tell them.
Stick them here and then we're going to tally them up.
We probably have a second opinion too.
So Beth? The standing pitch for our...
I got some, what do you think about...
Well, yeah, you have to...
Snacks, raw snacks.
I had for a while.
Something like that?
Yeah. Or come on over here to the same blocks and then...
When you, when they're ready, like, with their serving, would you bring them over to that table over there?
Yes.
Had they discussed what like small partners would be paying for that?
Yeah, there's a...
Oh, there is?
This is the end of our formal, this is the end of our formal information session. There's snacks to eat.
Well, I know like when I, when I read the original one, it said up to $15,000, so that's just, they're going to...
There's different tiers.